Forum presence, so we're going to do a call to our study session for February twenty twenty four. Uh, we have an agenda. We're not going to go through a formal approval process. I do have one suggested change of the agenda and we had a email forwarded to us from city council requesting input on uh from all the different boards and commissions. And so I proposed that we add that after team dealing to uh discuss how we're going to proceed answering city council's question and sort of set an agenda for the next couple of months and how to craft a response. Is that okay with everyone? Great. Okay, so I'm going to turn it over to Sunny and Jason and let them um run the show.
So we want to welcome you to this retreat. It's fun to have a a setting where we can get to know each other a little bit better and not focus solely on the business of crab. Um, so we have some icebreakers that will have to adapt given the the situation here, but we're excited to to really dive into who we are and and what ideas and gifts we bring to this group. Um, so we'll just start with a very simple introduction. Um, your name, if you want to remind us what your job is, that's always helpful to me. And maybe where you are in the crab cycle, if you're leaving, if you are, you know, anything like that, that's relevant and uh maybe your favorite winter activity. I'll begin. Um, my name is Sunny Vanderstarr. This is my second year on crab. I have one more year and um I have been really longing to go cross-country skiing this this winter. I have not gotten out but once, so I'm hoping there will be a shift in the the weather in my time allotment to get out there and enjoy this beautiful snow.
Okay, um, my name is Alice Seager. I'm coming up on my finishing my first year on crab. Um, and I worked at Sea Holder in the environmental engineering department. I coordinated field projects for um the urban biology lab, working in schools in Denver and Boulder. And I like swimming.
Do you want staff to go too?
Yeah.
Totally.
I'm Ally. In my twenty-first year of the City of Boulder. I love winter hiking.
Megan Lomen, um, I'm my I'm going to my twelfth year of the City of Boulder. Um, I'm the recreation manager overseeing the rec centers and aquatic health wellness gymnastics, that stuff. Um, and I really like playing in the snow with my dogs.
I'm Scott Schottenberg. I'm the deputy director and I've been with the City of Boulder just over a year. Um, in the winter, I love hiking in the summer, but the winter hiking is just, I don't know, not my thing. Um, I'm going to go a different route here and say my favorite activity in the winter is to kind of hibernate, watch college football, basketball, um, sports on TV, just like that's the time to kind of rejuvenate and uh have some of that time, so.
Brian Peary, I support our community building and partnership efforts. I've been with the city for for seven years here, the department. I may take a very similar tact to Scott, except my focus is hibernating and trying to make sure I've seen all the Oscar nominated films, songs, but I'm not there yet. Isn't much of a
Yeah, what's your favorite so far?
I think Oppenheimer will have it pretty handily, but I really liked Anatomy of a Fall.
Are good things.
Was it my turn?
Yep.
Uh, I'm Bernie, um, or and uh it's like Anna, it's the end of my first year on crab. Um, I love winter. Winter is like definitely one of my favorite seasons. I love to hike in the snow, ski on the snow. Um, in my youth, I did a lot of winter camping and then in my slightly older youth, I discovered huts and I'd like definitely love taking hut trips. Um, uh, and I'm having a very bad day, as you know, in addition to destroying my knee, I also was laid off from my job this morning. So as of today, I'm on the hunt for new employment. Um, I'm a PR and marketing professional and for the last couple of years, I've been working at a virtual cycling platform, uh gaming platform. Uh, so you know, if anyone knows anyone who's hiring in the bike industry or connected fitness or any any sort of connected uh devices and applications, uh, all that is is completely within my wheelhouse. Um, and as I said to Chuck earlier, I'm glad to uh be able to set all of my woes aside for a couple of hours and talk about parks.
Great. Rosa?
Uh, Rosa Koga, uh, Prab secretary, uh, year in the past. And um my favorite activity, I would like to go snowmobiling, so.
I'm Chuck Brock. I uh, my regular day job is a air quality and climate scientist at NOAA here in Boulder. Um, I am, I have two more meetings left on Prab and then I'll be done. Five-year term, which is been through COVID, so it's been an interesting experience and very different than what I expected coming in, but it's been worthwhile and a lot of fun. Um, up until last year, I enjoyed skiing in winter, but then I tore a tendon in my knee and now I am into snowshoeing this year and maybe I'll be back skiing next year, but we'll see.
Um, Elliot, this is my ending my third year, going into my fourth year on Prab. Can't believe it's been that long already. It's crazy. And I'm an attorney. And my favorite winter activity is probably snowshoeing in the foothills outside of Boulder while listening to music, because you can go off trail and it's really very peaceful. Um, everyone, Jason Unger, uh, this is my end of my fourth, uh, and I'm sorry to say probably my my last year on Prab. I'm not sure I'm going to be able to continue sharing the news like that, but um, it's been amazing. I've been wondering, I've joined, I talked before, the first week of, the week after the pandemic and um, it's just been a really great experience to be on this board with this group and um, anyway, we'll save that for later, but I may uh, I I do federal uh policy consulting, mostly education, but I've got a number of other issues as well. Uh, winter activities, I did not like the winter when I lived on the East Coast and wanted to only stay inside and hibernate, but now that we live in Colorado, um, I love the winter and all the activities, but my favorite is probably skiing uh with my kids.
And you're an elected member of
some job. All right, uh,
He's an elected member of the BBSC school board, which is which is a way
Number two, I'm not going to probably going to be able to continue. It's just too much to to carry both boards and I'm sorry to to not complete my term, but uh yeah, I tried. I thought I could do it and I think the reality of the last few months is I probably can't, so um, thanks for for understanding and appreciate the support. Um, so real quick, Chuck, we have a slightly different slide scheduled to the agendas. Okay, okay. Um, can we jump right into this? Okay.
And if you, do you want us to have that up on the screen? Because if you said it, I think Rosa has that, she can share it.
Yeah, if it's all we don't like, it's Bernie.
I think there's a way to do both. To have a presentation and a gallery.
Your Google slides?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Put Rosa in her happy place. She can, she's a a Google gal.
We can hear our office three sixty five.
I know you're going to do it.
It's all I have.
There's a better world out there, Al.
So you switched us. We used to be on Google and then they switched us to office three sixty five, but it's not. There's a lot of things that don't matter.
Give me a second.
How do we do this? A presentation in two parts? Or is it just one?
Our presentation.
Just one.
Okay.
We'll go through all the slides and then
Okay.
So if you're at the first, you want them to do that first, or is do you have?
So we we had a, it's it's no big deal. We had kind of broken it down um into two themes, access equity, but if it's um
We'll go through and then I think we can have some great discussion around um everything in reference back to the the slideshow. We've only got about thirteen slides, fourteen slides.
We do it in two parts, so that we were going to break it up with icebreaker in between, but we can just
Sure, we can whatever you'd like.
Whatever, whatever works for you, Ben.
This is Jason's slide deck.
Yeah.
So we want Jason's or?
Uh, if you could use mine, but go back to uh um, how about we do, we'll, we'll, okay, on the fly here, we'll just go to the icebreaker and then we'll go to your presentation and go back to another. So if you go and go to the fourth slide, this one here, okay, next slide, speed dating. Uh, so we we had hoped there'd be more staff members, but I'm glad people are not here if they don't need to be, but we want to do this uh with staff and Prab members. Um, it's kind of a variation of speed dating. We're going, I think we have, see how many people we have, four.
Oh, we have five and five, any person.
Okay, so Bernie, you might have to be an observer. It might be a little hard to have you join, but uh
That's fine.
You can answer questions at the end of each round. So we're going to do five and five. We'll have five people, maybe the five of us line up against the wall and then the other five could kind of stand next to us. We're going to do uh, four rounds, um, two minutes, each group gets two minutes, um, the first minute for one person, second minute for the other person. Um, and then we'll shift and have a new question. So does that make sense?
It does. I do have a a question. So for Bernie, we do have a couple of teammates watching virtually that we could put on the spot and we could mute the room and you all could get to know each other so that you're not bored for the next sixteen minutes.
I I am know nothing about Zoom, so I have
Is there a way, Rosa, is there a way to to make a room?
What what's your idea here, Rosa? And is there a way we could get Bernie, if we just mute and take down our slideshow?
We could do that.
Yeah. So if we just mute and take down our slideshow, they can all talk to each other and not
It's recorded. They will also be broadcasting their conversation to the public.
You know, yeah, all right.
Out loud, trying to come up with ideas.
I'm happy to just take a couple of minutes uh in silence here and wait for the outcome. That's fine.
Lucky you.
Meditation.
Um, okay, maybe we'll go into the center of the room and see if we have this five lineup and then you five will be the rotating group. Um, Rosa, if you can turn it to the next slide.
I'll watch the cords here.
All the cords.
Please, everybody note the cords.
Maybe maybe spread out a little bit.
And so one of these questions?
So as round one, we're going to have two minutes, one for one minute per person to answer the first question and then after the time's up, please, I love using a timer. Um, we will, uh, you guys can rotate around and then we'll go to the next question. Does that work?
So do we shift?
We shift this, we stay, these guys shift.
Okay.
So make this time.
It's just like, there's one minute each, then like you
At least I don't feel
I know. It felt like crazy.
No, I fell on ice this morning.
It was treacherous.
The lighter house and I had to like run onto the side because I was
All right, one minute to answer all four.
One minute, no, no, one minute. This is the first round. We're just doing the first question, so each one has a minute to answer and talk about it.
And we're just doing it with the person
Yeah, just with the person in front of you. And so, you know, it's it's a
I'm ignoring, trying to ignore what Rosa and Ally are saying.
As best we can, so we We do the full minute. Uh, sometimes our, you know, some of the answers are, could be a single word, but use your minute to, or use your time to kind of elaborate a little your ideal vacation or those kind of things. So the first one is, what did you want to be when you, that sounds awkward, when when you were young, when you were young and you envisioned yourself in a future career, what was that? So we'll do two minutes. Starting now.
Pretty much. Well, I wanted to be two things. Training, traveling. Favorite sex. Oh, yeah. I'm a star. I'm a star. I'm a superstar. Yeah, I also wanted to be a I would say, but I was a really interesting sport. It's a beautiful, yes. I'm not nearly good at it. The even though we changed during for used to completely again, like I was, you know, I was like in the mid seventies. And I just think I shot in a seventy I've never broken apart.
All right, thank you, thank you for for uh that was a perception. And then Rosa shift to the right.
All right, and then we'll start a new timer.
We'll start two minutes now with the question, what is your ideal vacation?
Do you want to first?
I would be mine, it's a big I think it's a it's right, this is right. history of I had to see what I think cars, like see in the history of also
It's close. Yeah.
Well, we see it, it's it's different. We have a question, we have a question. Be like obviously
It was a little interesting, right? But like it's the thing during this next less pure, like overall, I think that everything's in like you just California adventure.
So I
next to you so
like it's
so it's like
I mean so
I've been there it's a weekend I'm and perhaps yeah but yeah Spain it's I actually my ideal I actually enjoying my I love because I can like
like being a tower so bringing up in the part
but then I didn't
it's over nine and I'm white they
it's like
they so
vacation I didn't have a lot of day, I really part charging and then when it's law that's well, I do it just a lot of that stuff.
Oh, yes.
You know, dreams.
So you know
No, I don't look at you know somebody
she loves
yeah and I wrote that and I think
she loves
first that so by most I think and all those it's
well I will be down to
two years. Because you want to yeah
she's I didn't today
she
she and
be sorry, sorry, timed out. Half of your conversation. Everyone, you guys rotate to the right. One beer, like two minutes for uh so Fred, hey, what is one of your favorite family traditions?
Trump.
Uh, very so
questions every year. We go to help pretty so we like do that uh, it's great, because you don't want to just spend your whole time or to we don't need to do that. And I don't want to spend my time in the speech because I like so so I like that, I like
the most ideal also
uh, so yeah or I don't have to have a yeah, so like when they're in sky they're I would say it's really like so I fully appreciate and like what's going on. I'm ready. Sorry. But like then so it's
now
it's like it keeps
setting a night unless
oh my god I have to get this we're going to forever but I don't know, I mean, you give me a more houses but we like all this continues uh, one half of those scout ones
it's
yeah
and
check which this he's like trade so but uh, I feel like it's certainly a lot of them, they just started okay they are
which
we are
like
yeah
of they like so I rather you said there are a lot of families
no so
it can
it is
so so
yeah
things together but from
Long Island?
especially so
what's um, West very you know it's yeah but I was like, we're always going to have things we don't yeah this area is a
yeah
for yeah yeah personally different like it's that
so
if Rosa is scanning
scanners next summer maybe
I want to this
that'll
yeah, to your younger brother or
yeah
we do it with all like so maybe traditional on the bottom like
did she
very
yeah so
it's I guess maybe
no
All right, let me get, all right, everyone wrap up your conversations and move to the uh one more round. Oh, careful, careful, careful. This might be a shorter one, but it could also be a long conversation. Like your favorite boulder
It's going to be quiet. No one's going to be able to pick.
Why? It's had like two minutes. Brand new. It's going to be
I'm chocolate.
Scott Schottenberg. Hey, Jason.
You know, that's all right.
I love I love this I love yes
here do
see I don't
it's he's
I also I also start this
it's like you know I will be part of something uh, yeah
you're you're related I've heard it's so I I like
yeah
that sorry
so
and what yeah 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 so they spark so it's got they give others like that it's right so the
the
it's you've theater it's like from so crack rock should you so I like wait well what's yeah it's yeah but like like once again so yeah and then like that's three hours yeah so be one day we're part so yeah I guess who wants I and I'm gonna slide the paper card it's like a nice it's like so I said, here's like Sam so there's no so it's like say this okay I'll so can if you just just like and like that that's everything is everything it's I mean I'm but it's it's yes, I just think like that's I just know because I whereas now the example there's like yeah, so now we're both like also instead of like this one's six sorry this is but what was it? I yes uh, thanks for all just to
folks want to wrap up with that conversation?
I would love to it's great yeah yeah me too. Yeah, like I'm there, it's like a little so so it's I mean, it's there's so much yeah yeah still like there's nothing like you should yeah I wish it's activating yeah it's okay[1571.61] Maybe. I. Well. God. It's. It's. Yeah. That's. 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 Yeah. So. I usually. It's. Again. Or are we gonna? It's. Well. We. We. I like talking about this. It's. We've. It's. Well. It's. That's. I keep picturing. Summer. More of the. You know. The. She. Pass. For. Our. Most. It's. The. By the party. And. And. Yeah. Where she's. And. It feels like. It's. So. Alright, everyone. Yeah. Yes. That. It's. And. Like. Someone's. We. Didn't. So. Alright. Those were like. Pretty. So. I think. Pretty. I feel like. More. New. Times. Yes. Very. Like. So. Right.
Wait. Enjoyed getting to know.
Yeah. About. I learned some stuff.
College in the room and yeah, I have really fun. I think so. Good conversation, got to know some cool. Better one. Uh, I know Bernie, if you want to answer one of the questions live or if we just want to move on.
Nope.
So. Yeah. I.
I. I'll just, I heard the first question, which is what did you imagine yourself being when you grew up? And I, I always thought I'd be a writer and then I was a writer and it was great. And I had a great. If brief careers for writer before transitioning into marketing.
Great. Alright. Well, we will turn, you know, we just did before, I'll turn over to Ally and the team. Uh, we, there was a real interesting among the members, prime members of talking about equity and access. Uh, and so. Uh, there's a lot of components to that, but the presentation I think, you know, deals with the whole range of things, including interest in. Swimming equity and. So. Turn over.
Yeah. And Scott and Brian and Megan are gonna leave this presentation, but I do want to do just a brief introduction to thank you all for, for your interest in this topic. Similar to. Last year and two years ago where the retreat has given an opportunity for a deep dive on a topic. When I saw the way the team has um organized this conversation, this is all really important work that's happening all the time. But because, because it's governed by existing policy, because you know, there hasn't necessarily been major changes or need of grab input since, I mean, we did some major overhauls in seventeen and eighteen around accessing the system. You don't hear about it. Uh, and so I'm, I'm really grateful for your attention on the topic. We'll be here for any questions you might have. And I look forward to Scott, Brian and Megan really just highlighting what has been an incredible amount of work over the last decade to make sure that our program are more accessible to everyone in the community.
Rosa, would you mind pulling up the presentation? So as I mentioned, we, we just have about fourteen or so slides that we want to go through and then we'll jump in and, and have some discussion. Uh. Rosa, if you want the next slide, please. I think it's important that we always start off with a one boulder approach and um, and this is something that I think is, is really important to us that we break down the silos of the different departments and really. Uh, one boulder is, is the North Star, um, that help, helps us to break down those silos and align our efforts to create uh positive change in the community and in the organization. And so. Uh, really the one boulder approach cascades citywide. It's not just parks and rec. Um, it, it oversees and, and uh, and really unites us. And you can see the funnel. I know you've all seen this um. Image. Before, um, we're gonna talk about sustainability, equity and resilience in that framework here in a minute. Um, but I will say as we, as we go through, looking at this funnel, it is guiding our work and really the direction that we're, um, we go and the work that we do within our department. Um, when I. Before I came to the city of Boulder, uh, about a year ago, I really looked at our twenty twenty-two BPR plan. We're gonna talk about that here in a couple of minutes. But I also looked at a lot of the documents that really guide the city of Boulder, and I will tell you, equity is really weaved into everything that we do. And all the plans that we have. And that's what's really exciting about as we go through each one of these um, these items. We're gonna talk quite a bit about the BPR um, twenty twenty-two plan. And what equity looks like in that plan. But there is a strong, strong commitment in the city of Boulder, not just with Parks and Rec, but with every department. Um, to look at equity and um, and so I'm excited to talk about that today. Rosa, can you hit the next slide, please? So really, uh, starting off, I think it's important that we talk about our sustainability, equity and resilience framework. And this incorporates the one boulder approach to achieve uh, our vision. And um, and a future with equitable access to health, prosperity and fulfillment, where our community adapts and thrives in response to emerging and sometimes urgent social, economic and environmental change uh, and changes. This framework guides strategic planning and budgeting uh, by providing consistent goals necessary to achieve Boulder's vision of a great community and actions required to achieve that. So um. You can see on the screen there, there's seven key areas, safe, healthy and socially thriving, livable, responsibly governed, accessible and connected, environmentally sustainable. And economically vital. And within each one of those um, areas. We're talking about equity quite a bit. A lot of what we do in Parks and Rec falls under healthy and socially thriving. But so much of what we do also hits those other areas, livable communities. Obviously, we need to be responsibly governed, um, accessible and connected. Um. The environmentally sustainable piece is something that we're committed to as a department.
A neurodiverse student in gymnastics that might need someone to support them through a full semester. Uh, in that programming. So that's a little more of the service side than it is on, on the program side. And then the last approach is a little bit more recent for us. I think in about twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen. This really became a focus in that what we heard from the community was it's lovely that um. It's where we might be able to access and participate in uh. Parks and Rec facilities and, and programming and it's great that there's maybe a YSI program. But there are still barriers to participation. There's transportation, there's childcare, there's um. A, a multitude of, of reasons why coming to Parks and Rec facilities might not be an option. So that's where the focus became. Um, on outreach and that's trying to be adaptive, going out to the community. Our Rec on Wheels program within YSI is, is where we have a branded band full of play equipment and um. Professionals that go out to mostly manufactured home communities to bring programming on site. Um, working with the I Have a Dream Foundation is another uh place that we've had a good crossover with the community that is already in. Other programming activations like resource fairs, special events. Um, and then what Megan will talk about here in a few minutes, which is addressing emerging community needs that, that we've heard. So now to dive a little bit deeper on each of these individually, if you can go to the next one, Rosa. Um, financial aid and our subsidized access is the largest portion. Um, the largest part of our approach here. Um, and so there are nearly thirty-five hundred enrollments in the financial aid program. That's up from twenty twenty-two and that represents nearly fifty thousand visits to the facilities. Um. As it compares to twenty nineteen, we are at the highest level of subsidy we've ever been for these programs uh and these services and um. We'll say twenty twenty-three, we, we pre-pandemic levels, which is exciting. To say by about fifteen percent and it represents almost half a million dollars of, of subsidy for financial aid. Play Pass represents an additional ten thousand. That might look a little bit low uh as a number uh. And really that represents um that this voucher in addition to a course subsidy many times isn't used in full. And so folks uh in. That might have a play pass receive a two hundred fifty dollar voucher. I think our average is around a hundred and forty dollars that someone might spend of that voucher. And in turn, that, that unspent funding goes back towards Play Pass and they're able to uh. To, to extend more play passes out to the community. Yeah.
Sorry to interrupt you. Um, what do you attribute the pretty um sharp rise in subsidy total? Between twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three? I know we've talked about this before, but I think it's been a little while.
There are two pieces. If it's the dollar amount, a lot of it is a fee increase, right? So our greater fees, greater subsidy. Another piece is simply just service levels have increased so much. And so we've been able to have all the pools open this past summer. All the facilities are open longer hours and so folks are coming back and participating more. So. It's not just the dollars that have increased, it's also the visits. I mean, visits went up twenty-five percent from two also.
I want to add Brian and please correct me if I'm wrong. I believe there's a third element that there is greater need in our community and there are more folks who are qualifying for these programs. Um, they'll talk a little bit more about qualification, but and I, we don't have data in front of us around this, but I know anecdotally. Because we're about to talk about all things homelessness on Thursday night, um, there is greater family homelessness in the city of Boulder.
Um, another interesting stat just kind of goes in line with that is, and we, we've seen the numbers on any given day or week or month within the rec facilities. Somewhere between ten and twenty percent of all entries are uh through financial aid, they're subsidized entries. So it's a significant program and uh Scott and I were on a call on Friday with other uh service providers across the city organization and they are. Quite astounded that we have thirty-five hundred community members that are enrolled in our financial aid program and this is. As compared to even the guaranteed income pilot, low and middle income housing assistance, food tax rebate, we're all on that call. I said, wow, that's really a lot of people you have that participate in that program.
Um, so in order to participate in the financial aid program, you need to be enrolled in it? Okay. And then how does one do that? Is there like a form on a website that we have and you can, is it, can it be all done online pretty easily?
It now can be all done online. That was a post pandemic uh. Uh, post pandemic improvement, both in English and Spanish. Um, and you can enroll at any of the rec centers. Um, and then we also have avenues through our programs, which I'll talk about here in a second, but um our YSI program, all participants are provided with. The, the recent, you know, support and the materials to register for financial aid. The Play Pass program also, that whole uh pool, if you're eligible for a play pass, it's the same criteria to be eligible financially. So even if you might not receive a play pass. They're limited, you would still be able to enroll in the financial aid program.
And what's the um eligibility criteria for financial?
I'm glad you asked. Uh, we'll get to that in a second too, but it is fit currently. As of right now, it is at sixty percent of area and area median income for the year. Uh, previously that had been fifty percent. That was a change as of January first, just to, to bump that up to sixty percent. Um, talk about that here in a minute, but that was very much driven by the Elevate Boulder Guaranteed Income Pilot. They had started to uh Housing and Human Services had started to increase that threshold for uh self-sustainability in the city. And so we, we raised to match that. We're gonna see, and we're gonna see how that goes, right? I mean, this is the first time we're trying it. So in terms of enrollment and utilization, I would expect there to be more. Participation. I would hope that there would be more participation, but it's, it's probably a little too early to tell.
Is that, is that area median because that the Boulder area or is that like Denver metro that, that?
Is Boulder specific and it's set by the federal government. It is a very strange calendar of when that comes out. And it scales depending on how many people are in your, your family or in your household.
And just one question, Mal, you might know this uh, or how does this compare? Just to other kind of peer cities around the country. It's not to get ahead of slides, just hold that question, but is this, these numbers. Insist with peer cities? Are they, is this very generous?
I'm looking to the team. I'm happy.
Yeah. I, I maybe want to have to look into.
Yeah, I, I think a lot of communities are struggling. What I will say is um, we are so committed to making sure that we're serving and, and the needs of the community. I think we're doing an amazing job of, you know, nearly half a million dollars in subsidy at this point. Um, that being said, to really implement to the level we want, we would need another half million or, or more. Um, that number could be infinite uh as to, to what we could do with more resources to be able to subsidize uh our programs and, and facilities and services.
And there are some communities that again, depending on their, how their funding is structured, to have it set up different in Denver, for example, right? Older adults and kids in grade school are provided recreation passes and that's part of their funding structure. Ally, you were gonna say something too.
Regardless of income, it's just.
Regardless of.
Regardless of income.
I think it would be a great thing to list. We might even have it from the twenty twenty-two planning process or part of the NRP metrics. But to look at our, we have selected communities that are benchmarked, communities selected because they're similar in demographics, college towns, high performing. So we, we benchmark against folks who are either accredited like we aspire to be or have won a gold medal. Um, I think that'd be a great question to follow up. Anecdotally, I suspect that our program is very robust and highly utilized, but it'd be great.
Um, and then just one other pillar here is uh working with a state. Sponsored county managed program for childcare assistance primarily through camps and licensed childcare and that's called C cap. And that uh is supported through mostly in our, in our BPR summer camp programs. Do you mind jumping to the next one, Rosa? Thank you. Um, these are programs I won't spend too much time on. I think you, you have heard about them many times. Um, but our YSI program focuses on uh underrepresented communities. It was formed about, I think almost seventeen years uh ago at this point, based on direct community feedback to address vandalism, gang-related violence, safe out of school options. Um, and again, thirty-five hundred participations in twenty twenty-three for six hundred hours of programming. Um. An incredible uh mentorship program that can really reach teens in a way that we don't reach um. Teens in, in all of our programming and it's actually been a great employment pipeline for BPR and YSI program and the rec centers and lifeguards. Um, to be able to provide opportunities that uh kids feel comfortable with uh the services being provided uh and as they grow older can, can find employment. Um, and then our YSI team really are just uh the, the Swiss Army knife of partnerships. And uh collaborations, they work at multiple Boulder Housing Partner sites, they work in manufactured home communities. They work with initiatives and junior rangers and um. Really take that goal of building community partnerships to another level in, in there uh the way that they've been, become integrated uh in the community. Next one is our expand program. Um, again, a highly utilized uh programming. Uh, for our disability community, uh over two thousand participations. Youth, teen and adults, and I would underscore the adults here as an interesting point uh that most folks uh may not realize. Uh, that our expand program, especially for adults with developmental disabilities, provides a lot of support beyond that inclusion sport, but programming support. Um, and even camp programming over the summer. Um. Three to five staff, and a robust internship program that we shared information about in the last consent agenda. Um, and, and our expand program is really seen as a highlight in the whole county. Uh, there are folks that come and participate in our, in our programming across a wider. Um. Location demographic than just, just Boulder. Uh, this is a group that is very much involved in the ADA transition plan that uh that Scott mentioned. Yeah, Ellie.
Who um runs the programs for expand? Like again, what kind of training do they have?
At their certified. C T R S, Certified Therapeutic Recreation Specialists. Um, and again, they need to typically have interned and participated and have a certain number of hours. It is a licensed certification that they need to hold. Uh, and so we have a team of four C T R Ss uh staff.
Do we provide that certification or do they do it through some sort of?
It's a university program. Um, so they, they can major in, in uh therapeutic recreation at different universities. Uh, or in recreation with a therapeutic um specialty.
So it's actually coursework at college level, correct?
With continuing education record.
Oh, well, okay.
There's, there's some of the most skilled employees on our team. They have to create behavior plans. They are incredibly skilled at. Whatever you, whatever recreation you want to participate in, whether you have a developmental or a disability, getting and playing right alongside the community. They're amazing.
What's the certification called?
Certified Therapeutic Recreation Specialist.
C T R.
Is a mouth.
So folks, the other places you'll find a C T R S are the VA employs a lot of cer- certified therapy rec specialists, Craig Hospital. Often used for folks who have some type, um, the, the military is huge with the loss of limb and that. Um, so you also see C T R Ss in um supporting um youth behavior and.
Nursing homes.
Nursing homes of rec.
I, I would just add to that. Um, I, I have some expertise in this area. Um, I, I have a, a part-time job fortunately at a foundation called the Kelly Brush Foundation. That's um helps people with spinal cord injuries uh return to activities. Um. They don't employ these rec therapists, but they work with a, a huge network of uh adaptive sports programs around the country, including a couple. Uh, Ignite at Eldora is, is a big one. Um, so a lot of these recreational therapists work in those types of settings as well, where there's sort of place-based uh adaptive sports programs.
Thanks for that, Bernie. Can I add one thing that isn't on here is that the incredible talented staff is not enough. This is the area where we see the most amount of volunteerism in the department. Um, programs like the Expand Beyond Water Ski on Thursday mornings. The Boulder Boulder Racing. We have many, many programs that require two, you know, a two-to-one ratio. So for every two participants, there's one. Employee, we simply couldn't afford to do that. So for example, last spring at track, you know, on any given night, we had ten participants. And five staff and volunteers, because to keep kids safe, you know, in a pretty wide open environment, you need lots of folks there. It. It is some of the best work.
Well, it's pretty incredible. If you really, I'm looking at the requirements online, you really do have to like. Measure this basically. It's, it's amazing.
They're legit. Like I.
How many people do you have?
Uh, we have four C T R Ss on staff and then we actually, we have interns um each semester that, that come over and, and I think right now. Two, two, two now, but they're from all over the country. So I think one's from Virginia, one's from Arkansas this year, same. Yeah, so uh we have a, a reputation for our program being one of the best um programs in the country. It, it's amazing what we do for people with disabilities and, and the commitment to these programs. It's just awesome.
Great, thanks. Sorry to hijack the discussion, but that, that's fascinating.
We're happy to brag about expanding.
No, anytime.
There, I mean, I, none of them would, I'm, they're all very glad they're not here because every single one of them wants no public recognition, but they are amazing. Chelsea Churney, who does a lot of our sports program, was um Special Star Coach of the Year last year. Lori Goldman, who's the program supervisor, is amazing, started as an intern over twenty years ago. They're impressive. And Brian gets to, to supervise them and like hear amazing stories every small day.
It is so much fun. Do we, sorry to, to continue on this vein, do we as a program or as a department help subsidize? People to get the C T R S? Like if they're on staff and they want to go back to school, do we like help them do that?
Do you want me, I see everyone looking at me. So there's a couple of things that we do. So the way that our learning and development is set up is that if you. So once you have your C T R S, you have to get ongoing um CEUs, the Continued Education Units. And for any certification, there's, there's several that are in our field. There's a, Megan is a certified park, all three of these folks are certified parks and rec professionals. Scott's a certified parks and recreation executive. We pay for the ongoing curriculum that you need to get that. Um, the city has just returned an education assistant program that went away with budget cuts in twenty twenty. And so for up to four thousand a year, if a person came to us, I don't know the cost required with getting a C T R S and it would cover it. But say I chose to become a CPR RP, the, the cost is five hundred dollars. The city would pay for that through that program. And then the, the ongoing part of it is, is covered through our um education assistance. So you probably couldn't get the initial certification with our funding, but we would support the ongoing. Similar with if you want to become a landscape architect, right? Like no, you, you have to go to college and we can probably pay, you know, the four thousand a year and then support your ongoing education.
Great. I just got two more quick slides. Uh, one is just about how we gather feedback and make decisions. So you got the next one, Rosa. Um, really adopting that mantra of nothing about us, without us, we really seek out feedback for these programs each year. Um, and uh in addition to soliciting feedback, we also turn to our partners to um and participants to help share information. Um, to get the word out. We talked about that a little bit in terms of, you know, Boulder Housing Partners shares our financial aid enrollment. Uh, directly with eligible residents at, at low and mid income uh housing sites and for housing choice vouchers. Uh, our YSI program advertises for uh department services in community spaces. And then we do a lot of cross-promotion uh with partners like the Play Pass program and Play Boulder. Um. And then, you know, one, one of the, the ideas particularly with YSI is that um. The program should empower participants to feel comfortable coming to services that are provided by the city on their own. And so uh we even write those outcomes into our grants each year uh to make sure there's a percentage of YSI participants that can. Feel comfortable participating in uh recreation, at least your activities on their own and understand why they're important uh to their health and wellness. Uh, and then all of our community programs are aligned with our service delivery model, just in terms of, of constant evaluation and improvement on an annual basis. One more for me, Rosa, and then I'm gonna turn it over to Megan. Uh, and these are the highlights for twenty twenty-four specifically. Most of that info that you've shared with you was a snapshot of twenty twenty-three. For twenty twenty-four, I gave you this one as a spoiler alert. We have increased uh the qualification for um. Financial aid program to be sixty percent AMI to align with Housing and Human Services. On that same um. Note, we have worked very closely with Housing and Human Services and the Health Equity Fund to move from. An annual competitive process for that funding to a multi-year award. Uh, something that was really pivotal, pivotal uh. To the financial aid program, programming was in twenty seventeen and twenty eighteen, that first round of support from the Health Equity Fund. And it really helped provide a little bit of proof of concept that if you remove the financial, financial barrier entirely, would you see? Participation go up. Um, and it did significantly. Uh, and so we really feel like we've made a case that we can move into a, a multi-year uh award for that. Our work uh for some of the racial equity uh initiatives that Scott mentioned is showing up in twenty twenty-four by um. Embedding an equity champion in each of our CAPRA work teams. This is for uh accreditation uh project that we're working on this year. And all of our matrix teams, those are the cross-departmental um and, and cross-organizational uh teams. That are really applying that lens of the racial equity instrument to this entire process of accreditation. And is really our sole work focus for twenty twenty-four. Uh, we'll have that built into it likewise. Um, in much of our uh advertising for uh Summer Squad, uh as we, as we title, is it still Summer Squad? Is it still, still with the name of Summer Squad? Um, we really, we've really tried to make sure that um. We were using the resources available to us through the communications and engagement team and specifically our community connectors. To help with advertising outreach and representation in some of our advertising to the community to uh provide those seasonal hiring opportunities. And then the uh other piece for twenty twenty-four is focusing on an emergent community issue, uh just drowning prevention. Turn that over to Megan now.
Alright, so yeah, drowning prevention, right? And so uh unfortunately, last year here in Boulder, there were uh three people who died from drowning. Uh, there were thirteen in the state. Uh, and so it's horrific to think about. And certainly one of our, our goals is to uh. Prevent that in the community and help keep, keep the community safe. And so um, a year ago today. We didn't have any of our swim lesson programs restarted yet. Uh, we didn't have enough lifeguards a year ago to have all of our bodies of water open. And so I, when I say current state, I think we actually have a lot to celebrate even today, which is that. Um, over this past summer, we had over two hundred lifeguards, the most we've ever had. Uh, we've restarted our swim lesson programming. We're now operating uh swim lessons two days a week. We have a future goal of going seven days a week at multiple locations, right? But um, we're working our way back up. We've been using uh our service delivery model to help us with that. Um, and of course, some of the uh biggest hurdles there continue to be just hiring and training people. Uh, W S I, which is a water safety instructor, uh it's a three-day class training. And so that usually is uh, that is a certification that we offer to people. Um, and we pay for it and we pay for their time in it, but also getting a student uh three days of training, you have to be careful and timely with that. Uh, now with that said, we're, we're doing the work and we're actually making a lot of progress here, which is great. Um, so, but what about what we can do better? Cause we can certainly do better. Yes, we're gonna keep using our service delivery model and growing our program. From the two days a week it is right now to, you know, multiple locations, multiple days. Um, but we know that drowning prevention is a really key component, especially as you go into the warmer months and people are wanting to get in the water to cool down. Um, and so for this next year, we're focusing on some things that we think can help immediately while we also look at long-term goals. And so um in April and May, we intend to offer two free drowning prevention classes in each of those months. Uh, where the two in April would be at an indoor recreation center. It would, the class would be free. It would be focused uh and tailored towards families or anyone who can attend. And it would include access to the recreation center those days uh with free open swim for anyone who attended the class in the pool afterwards. Um, and then in May, we would intend to offer two of those drowning prevention programs. Um. Really key here is our water, our uh, our new program coordinator for a recreation program lead that leads our swim lessons is bilingual. Uh, his name's Carter. He's really great and he's gonna help us teach these classes bilaterally. So we will be offering these in Spanish and English. Um, so two in April indoors, two in May outdoors. Most likely at Scott Carpenter. Again, free access to the facility that day, we would teach a class and then provide uh free swim for families. Uh, and then in June, there's this really fun world's largest swim lesson day. Uh, and the goal is to get as many people taking a swim lesson as possible. And so uh Carter's actually really looking forward to trying to plan something to coexist with that day to be another opportunity for, for a drowning prevention program. Uh, now with that said, yes, we need to continue using our service delo- delivery model to grow our programming. We know that two-day-a-week programs or two days a week of, you know, eight-week-long sessions is not enough right now. And we are actively growing it. Um, every, you know, just. Just six months ago, we maybe had one page in the rec guide and now we have two pages in the rec guide. And we're hoping to build to, you know, three or four in this next one. And so we're making a lot of progress. And the good thing about that is like everyone we train, uh that's not just one more class, that's potentially six more sessions that we can offer on any given day. Uh, with just two or three more people hired. And so um, we're actively working on growing that. And with that said, like, we know we need to use our racial equity instrument as these classes grow so that we're not just. Doing the cookie cutter, this is what it was before and this is what it is again. But when do we need to offer the classes to make sure they're accessible to everyone in the community? And how do we um potentially offer the classes bilaterally? How are we helping people uh? You know, have a class, not only they can attend, but when they understand. Um, and. Um, and even it comes down to, and this is kind of a, another point that's more for all of the programs is registration, right? Like, are we allowing registrations to happen at a time and at a pace where uh they're accessible to everyone? And so those are some of the questions that we'll ask ourselves through the use of that tool, not only in this program, but uh in other programs. Um.
Oh, go ahead. I've been like.
Yeah, I gave a lot. It's all right. Okay. Um, so can I just ask about the drowning incidents?
So I remember reading in the paper last year that there were drowning incidents in Boulder Creek. Um, were there drowning incidents at pools or rec facilities?
Not in Boulder, not in Boulder, but and, and Megan and I have talked about this quite a bit. Um, and we feel like the, a, a great starting point for us is drowning prevention, which is a one-day. Uh, learn the basic techniques to hopefully be safe in a pool.
And not put yourself at risk when you're trying to save someone else.
Yep. Yeah, no, and I'm just curious, like, not that we need to have a drowning to justify these amazing classes, but I just wasn't familiar. If there was an incident, I didn't know about it.
Not, not in a guarded pool.
Okay, but you, so the drowning incidents you're talking about last year were the creek ones?
Open, yeah, open.
Okay, open water. Was there nothing in the rez either?
No, nothing in the rez either.
So on guarded swift water. A little more context on that is there's not been a death in a Boulder pool since nineteen eighty-four. There have been severe incidences. Ninety percent of them are related to a cardiac event in an older adult, where our teams have been first responders and deployed A D Ds. Um, at the reservoir, they have incredible protocols to protect small kids. It's hard when you can't see the bottom of the water. Um, and I, and I, I do think it's through incredible training and response that we have been able to have that, that track record in our pools.
There hasn't been a drowning in a pool in Boulder since nineteen eighty-four?
Yeah. There have been, I should, sorry, let me clarify. There have been deaths in the Boulder reservoir that were related to endurance events and cardiac events. I, so.
But not in pools. With kids especially.
Yeah. I was gonna ask about the classes, like what, what's taught there versus like a, I mean, obviously several week swimming class, like what do you, what do you learn in a drowning prevention class?
Sure. So uh drowning prevention is different than, okay, so this is actually a really great opportunity. Learn to Swim uh is a, is Red Cross programming that's like twenty-four weeks long, tailored to second and third graders. I'll talk about that a little bit more later. We don't offer any technical learn to swim by the Red Cross book. Have to be certified to teach and get a certificate at the end of it. Uh, it's just not realistic. But drowning prevention is about more than that. It's a, it's so it's, if I find myself in swift water or in still water and this is happening. What are the ways I can save myself? And also as a parent or a guardian or someone who is there, how can I help save someone else without putting myself at risk? Um, unfortunately, one of the drownings last year was actually someone that was attempting to help another individual. Uh, and it, it did not, you know, and it resulted really badly. And um, and so drowning prevention doesn't touch just like on how I save myself. But how do I also safely um help others in this situation without putting another person at risk? Is the, the reality is a. Cause the the reality is if you put yourself at risk now, when emergency personnel do get there, they're gonna have to try to save two people instead of one. Uh so it's, it's, you know, it's what can be taught in a one, one day class versus you're not live. Learning swim strokes and things like that, it's just like, what are the really vital tools to help?
Absolutely, is there a logic to, I mean, I don't know what the in practice, you know, it's so much, there a logic to, to the, a swim, it's in, that's the first. Something very important, you should learn the first day, and if you continue to come teach how to swim, but it seems like. That could be tied in a day, like that should be widespread beyond just, I think question first is that. There's more question, I don't know, but it seems like that could be a way to incorporate to 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 get that across the community and.
Well, and I I think certainly like these one day classes that can help just prevent drownings, like that's why we wanna do these out there for free. Get people in the rec center for free that day to kind of help encourage, please attend, do uh do it. You know, in in two languages so that we can really reach the most people possible. Um you know, it's very different from a swim lesson and then a swim lesson, like you're, you're gonna get in the pool, yeah, you're gonna learn how to not drown, but you're also gonna learn strokes. So you're also gonna learn um more aspects of, you know, swimming even as a as a sport as well as a as a safety component.
On that community awareness piece though, just the Boulder Creek management plan, that first initial phase that's gonna be. Um ready, May, June timeframe is gonna be on creek signage, community education, cause some of this is also just education. That if you, if you don't know how to swim, any amount of water is deadly. And so that whole communication effort is another, you know, track running.
Fast moving water can be deadly.
Ellie, I was about to ask you about that because I I witnessed uh and what could have been a drowning last summer, where, you know, someone was playing the creek and got freaked out and you know. Spread, I was about three seconds away from calling the fire department, the guy's friends helped him. But I think signage uh would go a long way and I assume that we would do that in multiple languages, right?
Yep, and then another element of that, just FYI is um. Boulder Fire Rescue's been working closely with the county and the state around um a stream flow protocol. So right now, we only close Boulder Creek to tubing and recreational activity beyond kayak um kayaking at seven hundred cubic feet per second. Um my understanding is that. I don't wanna make up the number, but I believe all three drownings occurred at four hundred cubic feet between three and fifteen, four and cubic feet percent. So they're revisiting those protocols.
How was that communicated? Like if I was just a person who went down to the creek and. And thinking of getting in and then realize, oh, the water's pretty high.
When it's actually been closed, there's signage regularly across the creek, but that threshold at seven hundred, I think it only happens once every three or four years right now. And so they're revisiting that based on data, based on, there's obviously a lot of emotion around this topic. But what makes sense revisiting protocols, if you visited Claire Creek and Golden, um they have a a flag protocol similar to beaches where, you know, it's a red flag day, yellow flag day, green flag. So I think we can expect to see something similar.
I think there's certain like waterfalls that are on the tubing like section that are more in time to flip people. Like the one that's like right at the end of the library one. And so like I watched like five people almost drown there last summer because like parents would like put their kids down and the kids would flip and then they would not strap or they would have like jacket on or. So I think there's like certain spots that are more risky that people might not be aware of what they're getting into if they just like show up and they're not from Boulder or they.
The other element being explored, and I'm not sure how Regina set up on this, if she's even prepared to speak. We can, you know what, let's, let's follow up on that in April or May when we have more details. Life jackets for kids is part of a conversation, the state requires them under the age of twelve, so that would be a good thing to communicate to themselves, so.
Just kind of in the um vein of managing kind of what's going on in the water in the creek and stuff like who, which city agency ultimately like. Has jurisdiction, I suppose the word, over what's going on in the creek?
City of Boulder.
So but I mean, like, is there a particular department? I know it's the city, but like, yeah.
I mean, three knew as best I can, cause it's, it's so interwoven, so Boulder Fire Rescue is responsible for safety and response. Utilities manages actually the water, we manage the river, like we, you can't untangle it.
Okay, so it's like multiple agencies have jurisdiction over what's going on in and around the creek.
But the decision around like the protocols is Boulder Fire Rescue, the sheriff, the state, like we are there to support implementation and signage, but. Are not weighing in on decision making around rescue protocols.
Got it, okay, makes sense. They're not a park.
What's that?
They're not a park, they're like, they're, they're, they're like a thing that runs through the city that like.
The state manages the actual waterway, that's why there has to be a conversation, like you can't just go off and do your own thing and it's connected with the county. So it's fairly complicated, but Chief Calderott's was this great guy and working really hard on it.
Um so actually, I'm gonna, this uh jumping to opportunities, some of these uh take a little bit more effort to realize than. Which might be realistic this year, I will say our our new aquatic supervisor Hillary is really excited. About the idea of offering um targeted classes in community pools. And so that's something that uh we wanna start looking into, right? But it takes partnering with those communities, getting permission to actually teach in there, like knowing who's in that neighborhood and uh. What they need to support their access in that community. And so uh that's gonna take a little bit more work, but it's definitely something that our our team's really passionate about exploring. And then uh if you really talk about learn to swim programming, which is again a like twenty four week long sessions of. Learning how to swim, that's usually taught to second and third graders, they sometimes have to repeat levels and classes multiple times. Um that i- if we wanted to offer something that huge, it needed to be, it needs to be a really big coordinated effort. Um and this is, this is where I think it would be great if we were into the future, explore partnerships. And for instance, I know we're talking about potential partnerships with B V S D for sites. Uh being able to partner with B V S D on something like this and include that in that conversation. Might make sense to be able to capture uh second and third graders. And again, uh and and it would also be very expensive to to do that. And so um how we pay for it, how we have access to that many kids, the amount of instructors we need. Uh can be something that we vision for the future, probably in future conversations at the same time when we're talking about. What does a future aquatics facility look like potentially? Um also swim teams, so we're parks and recreation. We teach swimming from the very basic levels generally until uh what we call level five, which is about for twelve year olds. Um and then we have typically are passing people off to swim teams for more competitive swimming or school teams. Um and so we may have an opportunity in the future to work with swim teams, either to help. Develop and get even more swim instructors to help teach the lower levels or to figure out how we do that balance. Um again, this, we would be at the very beginning stages of starting that kind of conversation to explore for the future. Um it's hard to to know what it would exactly look like until we have some of those conversations with potential partnerships.
One of the things that's also challenging is um and and you've heard from some of the uh aquatic groups, the the. Over County Aquatics Coalition, uh there's already a concern about pool availability. And as much as we would like to have swim lessons offered seven days a week in our facilities. Uh the space to do that would be tough because it would mean taking away from lap swimming for community members. It would mean turning away some of the rental groups um and and the swim teams that don't have anywhere else to go, which they want more space as is. So um as we start to have future discussions with B V S D and other community partners. I think there's the opportunity to think about things from a visionary standpoint and the 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 broader perspective of. Yes, we would love to teach every single second and third grader in our community swim lessons. And create a program where it's it's free for those um kids. Um there are other communities that have done that, um but we need to have the space to be able to to make that happen. And um and also the staffing and the funding to to do that. So there's a a a vision of of what could be. Um and so for now, I I think Megan's done a great job with her team to say, alright, let's focus on these drowning preventions in two thousand and twenty four to start and and we'll build, go from there.
Is there a role for a course that lies between the one day drowning prevention? And a twenty four week learn every stroke and become an expert swimmer?
That is everything we offer. So we actually, um the city of Boulder, we do not offer any actual learn to swim programming that would at the end of it give you, you know, a Red Cross certificate. We offer um s- usually six to eight week sessions um that are designed to be parts uh parts of that bigger twenty four week. Program, so everything we offer and and that's actually why uh and and most municipalities do that as well. Just to be clear, most municipalities, and at least around here, do not offer twenty four week sessions that you then have to take twice before you move to the next level.
Six to eight weeks is still a a big commitment, wha- what about like having four swim lessons? Where you can learn the basics of keeping yourself afloat? And not really learn any, you know, that's that's really a form of drowning prevention, but it's more advanced than the basic one lesson. Um prevention class you have now.
Yeah, I actually think the younger groups, the preschool ages might be four and five week options. Um but I I wanna say most of our options are six weeks.
You say six weeks, how many classes is that in?
Six.
One, one a week.
Okay, got you, okay.
Yeah, six sessions.
So to answer your question, yes, there's there's a bite for it, um we know that and and that's where we're trying to find that happy median. Um and uh continuing to evolve, evolve what we offer for for swimming and and instruction there, so.
So if B V S D, for example, were to require that students get drowning prevention course. You could conceivably craft a class that would.
Yeah, if 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 we were told we had um funding and space to make that happen. So if we built a new aquatic facility at Belmont or somewhere else. Um and and B V S D made a commitment to ensure that everyone in the school district uh or in the city limits wanted these swim lessons for all their second graders. We would then establish that curriculum and and put together a proposal and and make something happen for sure.
You know, the amount of access that you would need to those kids for that level of programming would almost be like you're taking them for their entire class for a year.
But how would you, if you build a new facility, how can you guarantee that it would be available for the. Swim lessons instead of for like the groups that are already picking up all this time.
That's a great question, it's about community priorities and um and what's important to the community. So I I think we would have to do a lot of research uh prior to to coming into any agreement with the school district or. Um you know, obviously creating a new facility, there's, there's a lot of discussion that needs to happen there.
Community pool seems like the easiest way to get. Time and space that you need.
You mean like neighborhood pools and apartment pools and stuff like that?
Boulder Meadows has a pool.
This has a pool.
Yeah, and we already have agreements with some of, some of those locations through Y S I where um, you know, if we can get agreement to offer some programming at their locations in the pool. I think I think that's where our most realistic opportunity is, that would be a doable do. The other one is very much a wish list, might not happen, it depends on what the community sees as a priority.
Stop, I've, I've read about some places, I think there are individual schools that have required, you know, all the kids or they provide funding for all the kids. If in a hypothetical situation where like a few schools or a district uh did that and you have provided the funding, the issue would just be the capacity, there's no. Like, that's not a, that's not possible, right?
Not with our current resources.
Yeah.
Well, if B V S D provided funding. For staff time, for example, you'd still run into the having enough pool space and.
Space, yeah, yeah.
And it depends on what levels we're talking about, because certainly a number of levels, like right now, our leisure pools are only on, open on opposite days. We can run levels for some younger kids in the leisure pool that's not open, but as soon as you need a higher level in a lap pool. Um and we have a lot of open water from one to three, if a kid was in gym class from one to three. Um but again, like, we can't do that on an island.
But this is where the surgical approach is gonna be so helpful, every child in B V S D does not need to learn how to swim. Through public parks and recreation, but you know, so many of um the children of the Boulder Valley District have incredible privilege and access to resources and trips and training and schools. And so this targeted approach of getting the public parks and recreation to the kids who need it most is really where we're gonna have the effect. And so I think the problem is is still complex, but it's not fifty six thousand students.
Yeah, what do you anticipate for the April, May and June? I mean, do you have any sense of what the demand is gonna be like or interests?
I I mean, if they're gonna be free classes, and so we're gonna have two, two instructors, each, e- each of them is our plan right now. Um and I I'm not sure, I, you know, I'm hoping that if we market this out there and say it's also with a free day and bring your whole family and we make a thing out of it. That we get people coming and maybe some of them don't need the class, but maybe they learn something from it anyway. So I'm I'm hoping that it's still attendance. Um and and and, you know, I'm hoping that the, having people come in and swim afterwards is enough of a a draw to make them wanna come and a- attend the class. But uh you, we, I just, I don't know until we try it, you can't not try it, right?
How many people could you have in a class?
Um I think that would just be based on the capacity of the water that we're talking about. So I, you know, for instance, if we did one of them in April at the North Boulder Rec Center, well, if we get sixty people showing up, well, maybe we have. We're using two bodies of water and four instructors and stuff. Um you know, I I think so far we've talked about it as an upper number being maybe sixty um what we're comfortable with, but I, we haven't. You know, it it just, if it's a free day and maybe it's like you sign up ahead of time so that we figure that out, we're still working out some of the details.
And are you marketing through the school district?
So we'll market through Y S I programs uh for sure, and then we do work with the school district directly as well. So yes, there would be marketing through the school district and then through social media um program uh participants, current participants and other programs. Um and and really look at as many strategies as we can to get the word out there. And that'll be in English and Spanish.
I remember, I think when I met with you guys last year, you talked about, I think it was with gymnastics that you said like. That gymnastics opens up and then online registration fills up within like two minutes of.
Okay, camps does the same thing, yeah.
Um what, and I, my experience with working with some of the Spanish speaking families um. To sign up for soccer is that like a lot of times the online is not their preferred signup mechanism that they'd rather have like a paper. Application, so what is gonna be done to ensure that there's not like a rush to the gate and people that went to the side that are being more in need of those classes?
Yeah, I think that's where um we are considering early registration for certain um demographics or or groups. I think if we get the marketing out to like Y S I families first.
Okay.
And and give them the opportunity to sign up uh prior to opening it up to the entire community, I think that's, that's a good option. Um I think we need to continue to look at our marketing efforts and and how we do that. I know our our camp program, um camps filled pretty darn quick. Uh for this summer and and that's tough, cause we wanna make sure that we're serving the kids that really, and the families that really need that service. Um so I think we'll continue to look at marketing strategies to to find the best way to to make sure. Uh now I will say that I think it's ninety to ninety five percent of of the folks of the three thirty four hundred people that um. Are getting financial aid are applying through our website. Um they're not doing it in person at any three rec centers, only five to ten percent of those applications we for financial aid are coming in person. So um it's it's a balance and we continue to look at it.
Well, and I um, you know, right now, especially with swim lessons, we're still at the point where we're trying to offer more and more to meet the community demand. Gymnastics is tough, cause we just expanded to a seven, seventh day of the week and we're still trying to grow that program. Um and at the same time, I think they got over a hundred kids off the waitlist into a class somehow. And so even just getting, if someone can't get registered immediately, get on the waitlist, our team will, will work with them directly uh to help and whatever way we can.
So we've shared a lot of information, uh Rosa, if you wanna hit the next slide, I think it's just really, I I know we've been answering questions. Um we can certainly answer more questions about swim lessons or anything else from an equity perspective that y'all would like to talk about.
Um I had a question about the migrant families that are recently arriving, both my son that goes to, you know, the bilingual school and my other son that goes to. Centennial right now, and I also said that there's a huge influx of migrant students that arrive from Mexico. Um and I was just wondering about if there's a huge like special. Um, and I was just wondering about if there's a huge like special outreach for them that may not have like the documents, like they're not going. I helped families apply for Play Pass. I think you have to upload like a um that you're receiving SNAP or WIC or.
For Medicaid or. Administration, sure.
I don't think it's the, I think that one you have to show government assistance. I know for the financial aid one, you have to, you can show it income or you can show another thing, but I think for Play Pass, you have to show another government support. Oh, right, you know, so I just wonder if there's any.
I've heard like a few dozen, like individual schools, I don't know overall.
It's more than that.
No, if he doesn't school like a centennial, I think there was twelve last week and then, so it's. It's a lot, but I don't know.
There's a couple of different like alternative methods to add applications for financial aid that we accept. One would be um in lieu of the, since everyone qualifies for the free lunch program now. Um, in lieu of that, we can get a letter from the school that just says they would otherwise qualify for the free lunch program. Um, and we have accepted, especially for like college students, um like visas. Uh, if the visa says like they're not allowed to work in the country, then we know they have no income and then we can approve it. Uh, as long as it's paired with like wherever they're staying, some kind of proof of where they're staying and some kind of proof of no income or.
And what if they're like doubling up with other families when they don't have a lease or?
It's a great question. We're going to have to continue to work through it.
This feels like something we could reach out to H H S on. I know they're working, but how can Human Services is typically that, you know. First touch on some of these more human services issues, and so I'm certain they would have some guidance for us.
Um, you've accepted like uh they've received mail at the place or, you know, anything that kind of shows that that's where they're staying, even not from.
So in terms of the uh support, uh financial support, is it restricted to people within Boulder City Limits? Or what about people that are in Gumboro or in the Mobile Home Park on the end of Belmont, that's just outside city limits, for example?
So um we are a municipality in the city of Boulder, and so so our our tax dollars are supposed to be spent. On people within the city of.
That's true for H H S granting and and any typical city support grants. So financial aid, uh all of the programs they just mentioned. That that subsidize access are are not available. The the difference is for expand programming, folks can register. They pay a non-resident rate that is still typically about an eighty percent subsidy.
Yeah.
But yeah, like that's saying last night or.
Just power, yeah.
Like they got those kids that go to my kids' school and then they try to apply and like fuck your app like. It's a hundred, they don't they have that in the city of Boulder until they.
Marshall and there's there's several mobile homes. So you see limits. But we give discounts for people who don't live in the city, who are working in the city. But that's because it's not some federal federally supported programs, that's strictly a border policy. Any way to fix that?
The biggest loophole, the best way is if I had unlimited funds, I would write play a big fat check. And let them expand the play pass to folks because they don't have the same limitations with their philanthropic dollars.
That's that's the biggest best way to do this. I know families that like.
I'm sure told that they couldn't. For the hell of anybody fund that funding, but if they were to find other funding support that didn't have that restriction, they could have the purview that we can.
Just to recap of the swim lessons, you said that right now there is swim lessons two days a week and we're going to try and create a cure for.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I like again, ideally we'd be offering swim lessons seven days a week, at least at one location. Um, even if it's just the lower levels, it would probably be the the leisure pools when they're not open to the public.
When, sorry, where are these lessons happening?
Um, I want to say there's lessons at north and east currently on Wednesdays and Saturdays.
Okay, cool.
So just speaking off the cuff, it seems like this is an easy sell to the city council to get more funding for support. For these programs. Um, I know you don't go directly to the city council and ask for money, you go through city manager and through the whole budgeting process, which is an annual exercise. But I think that given the equity focus of the city council, you'd have a very strong case to make. If you can manage it through the process and get it presented to the city council as part of the city's budget.
Be trying.
Okay.
I'll let me know, just note, you know, twenty-four budget for the first time, um we are using points. So in the past, the point two five cents sales tax dollars had been pretty strictly limited to um park development, park maintenance, things not funded. Outside of recreation with the gap that we've continued to see post pandemic with funding recreation. The twenty-four budget has seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in funding to support recreation so that we can maintain these service levels and a lot of it for stuff like this. Um. Megan, do you want to share some news about January that hopefully will be helpful?
Um, our our usage numbers, oh, this was in uh the consent agenda. And so our our usage at the facilities is now matching where we were in January of twenty twenty. So just before the pandemic for usage per hour. Now, remember, facilities are open as many hours, but we did just expand our hours in January. So the fact that we kept up expanding hours and had the usage kind of supported um is really great. Uh, actually, north and south usage per hour is uh either matching or a little bit higher than it was. Um, where total usage is still a little bit down, but again, we're not um, we're not open as many hours. So we're not also spending as much on some of our operations that we do.
So the connection to that is is pre pandemic, we got one point five million dollars a year from the general fund for subsidizing recreation. In um twenty, we did a one-time transfer from the point two five to bolster things. And twenty-one and twenty-two, we got a one-time support of an additional six hundred thousand. That went away this year and we said we we still, we don't want to reduce service levels. And we asked the community, we asked our board, we don't want to reduce service levels. So instead, we are not spending more on taking care of what we have in asset management. So with these numbers. If we don't need all of that money, it can go back to fund balance and be able to prevent it. So these numbers are exciting because recreation is a volume-based business. As that volume returns, it means we we could have more funding just already in the budget.
Well, and at the same time, though, we in twenty, early twenty twenty, maybe nine percent of our usage was financed. Free access and now it's closer to fourteen or more um in between ten and twenty, based on what month it is. And so um we have maybe just as much usage, but more subsidized usage than we used to have, which is both a good thing. And uh, you know, another way for us to advocate for the funding that helps support the community.
What we really want is a bilingual access coordinator so that we can have more full-time language translation available. And and what we're doing now is building that in with some of our current staffing. We want people, we want to do more. So that people feel welcome in the rec centers.
Do the job, I think, for that, or it's not.
No, it's not.
It's not that.
Yeah.
I think it was our Nepalese community in Boulder. I know it's it's relevant for the Violet, the park on, but uh.
I don't have the number off the top of my head. Because you were such a helper.
Probably pretty small.
Well, I don't, yeah, I was like, isn't it, is it less than three percent?
Oh, I'm sure it's got. Not three thousand Nepalese.
Yeah.
Native speakers and. Might be five hundred.
Great, thanks so much, Peter Phil.
Yeah, yeah.
You're doing really good. Chuck, your last question might lead us to our next discussion.
Oh, great.
Uh, priorities for. Yeah, thank you all very much. Sounds really great. I think more than we hoped for and really great scale of information. And a lot of good numbers, like things are getting back to normal and pre-pandemic levels, that's great. Chuck, do you want to?
I wonder if for um Anna and Bernie. An overview of this item, so they haven't seen that note, the background instructions on the.
I don't have any materials.
You sent it to us today. It's, I I put it on one of our slides, Rosa.
Look at you.
So I got a note from the clerk's office that I forwarded to the chair and vice chair and said, I recommend you add this to the agenda tonight. Then you have two business meetings, so, yeah.
And then we asked you to forward it on to Jason's site.
I can't email all six of you and propose business.
The third, third to last one, which number is?
I mean, I suppose I could, it would be wrong.
Still your meeting, but uh, you know, just based on our last conversation, I think. So we we need to discuss, maybe not discuss the topics today, but we'll have a have a plan for what we want to. When we want to discuss responding to this. So we have two meetings where we we can discuss this. The last one probably needs to be crafting dash awards. Uh, because we can't do that outside of the meeting with uh without having a a board meeting or violating board meeting rules.
Chuck, can I offer a little more context for Bernie and Anna?
Sure.
And that so uh this election, we have four new members of council. Um, but typically councils have a major retreat every two years at the start of that term. And they set a two-year work plan that as a council, those nine folks, what do they want to achieve together? And so at that retreat, it's scheduled for April fourth and fifth. They will, over two days, talk about both how they work together and their work plan. And so to set that work plan, of course, council members have their own priorities and things that they talked about during the campaign. But in the past, and typically they rely on input from boards and commissions. And so if you like, for your February packet, we can share the last two examples of what grabs have submitted typically in the form of a letter. And you do have, um, it's due March twenty-second, so you have two meetings, which is great because it means you can figure out how you want to get this.
So um we could, in this meeting, propose just throw out a couple of ideas for what we might suggest. That could give us a start on this, and then we could have a more in-depth reading, uh discussion of it under matters in the next meeting. And then between the next meeting and the March meeting, we can um develop a letter draft. And then we can approve it in the March meeting. That would be my proposal.
Yeah, just to give you some examples, things we've done in the past. Um, we've communicated to council about addressing the unhoused population. Um. We also, I think in our twenty-one letter, we said restart area three planning. Um, reserve studies, so talking about area three. And did we do a letter in twenty-two or this past year?
They didn't do a, so they did away with the mid-year retreat last year.
Right.
So it's every two years when they do a major retreat and ask for this type of an input. The in-between year is more of a, hey, we have these eighty-five things left, let's get it down to a reasonable size and the dramatics. They they don't have that many things.
Based on today's discussion, I would suggest that we highlight the financial support programs equity. And have a request for council to consider supplementing those with a returning to the levels we had pre-pandemic. Which was one point six million. Is that what you said?
We're there. That's what. One point six, we're we're still at that, that. We had gotten six hundred thousand plus in twenty-one and twenty-two that has now gone away. So we have ten point six.
Okay, okay. But expanding them out available so that we can expand these programs conceivably to reach some of these communities that are just outside city limits. Um, I don't know what numbers to throw out there or if we should throw numbers at them.
Maybe just a general support for these programs, this serve.
That's wonderful.
I know Play Pass gets a waitlist, like that they get way more families that they can that they can actually.
Yeah. Giving a sense of the scale, a sense of the need, scale of the need and and the shortfall that we currently have and asking. More funding, because I think I think this council is really focused on equity. Housing and equity are the two main.
Does Angie have a list of?
Yeah.
I didn't hear that, sorry.
I asked if Play Pass has a list of how many families are on their waitlist right now.
I I will want to confer with our team and get back to you, but it could be at the February meeting. So last year, there was the potential that there would be additional funding because of the um passage of the library district. Now, it turned out that money went to continue existing programs and never came to fruition as far as being available, but in lobbying for it. Our team did write some proposals on how we could expand aid and what it would cost. And so it might be that those can be recirculated. We might be able to share some information that would help.
That would be very helpful.
Still support swim equity. That's one of the community issues.
As as a special part of this or completely separate?
Uh, completely separate. Make sure that. That the populations right now that aren't merging to swim are getting access to that.
About, I love that we're expanding our services, but I also feel like I'm anticipating that we're closing down. Um, some of the schools in the near future for renovation and some are dying. And so I'm just curious like how, where the intersection is there? Like, is this an opportunity to ask council to like actually fund? Or find a revenue stream to actually create a new South Border Rec Center? Or um, you know, help out with East or whatever, because if we don't have the facilities, I don't know where. You know, how it's how it's going to work if we if we start getting more people to go, is that just going to? Make people feel real frustrated with the system again and go elsewhere? So. I just feel like, I I don't honestly know how the how the system works well enough to know, is this an opportunity to shade it? To counsel like, we need a a bond or we need a vote or we need money stream to actually get the system. To a point where we can then bring more people in.
What makes all the sense to me, I think that's a lovely point, is that you know that the current twenty-four budget and the planned spending funds. Most of the renovation at East, but the renovations for South and North. And any additional facilities that the community desires are not funded. So we could also look and see what information we can provide to support that if you want to explore it. Actually, maybe we'll wait till you land on your topics for February and then we can figure out if if and how you want or need information from us. Thanks for helping me in that.
But we won't be able to land on our topics until February because we can't discuss.
I think I think in the past, uh, we've always just had kind of general ask without getting specific dollar amounts or service numbers. So in this case, what, you know, like number one, highlight this, you know, the financial aid programs and how well they work. And we'd love to be able to support more. And then I think a number one of just, here's the facility needs, here's the work we're doing from our community about swimming or about. You know, whatever it is. And so not getting into like this, we need X dollar, but a dollar in East, X money dollar in South. I think just kind of a like, we're we're in dire need of new facilities, new and expanded facilities, saying along those lines where it's just. A general ask where we're not getting into the weeds on budget line items, I think.
Yeah, I think that South Boulder Rec Center is a huge issue for the town. And I think we, obviously, it's not, the rebuild of that is not funded, but I think we should be reminding council that like, that's a big deal. And we need to have a stream of funding to to actualize that, fixing it. Either rebuilding it or making it better, I don't know, but it's at least a big issue for me, so.
For me, like the the swim equity piece is different than like, are these going to be future clients of your rec centers? And how's that going to impact your business model? Like, I feel like it's like a basic life skill that the people need to have, regardless if they're in their own backyard. Or if they're in the community pool or in like a neighborhood pool or like wherever they are, that it's like a basic life skill that they. Should have, um, that all kids in Boulder should have. And then there's a certain population that isn't getting access to be able to learn those skills. So I don't think it should be looked at in terms of like, will this increase our population of people that don't have anywhere to go swimming? I think it's like, are they going to potentially not like be at risk of drowning when they are near a body water? And be able to like enjoy the same things as other kids their age can do.
And I think these topics flow naturally, right? We start with, we need more funding for equity programs. One of, one of the key equity programs that we're missing is teaching swimmers all kids, right? And then in order to do this, we need to have good facilities to teach something, right? So they, they sort of floating around the team.
We could make a number two, like you're, you know, like a city goal, maybe we support. Now, do we have all sorts of goals about, you know? Be this by this year, like that could be a kind of a citywide role of universal. Access to swim or even swim safety or however you want to call it, seems like that could be, it should be more than just parks and rec, like if it's, it should be a city priority across departments. I don't know how we frame that, but it seems like that is a very worthy goal.
Which were the cities that you said that have done that?
Wait, as far as uh, universal swimming? I, I don't know any of our um. Benchmarks and, and, and where they're at. I'd have to do some research and get back to you, but I, I, I have heard of it happening.
Bigger cities are better at it from the aspect of like, I know Denver, like Scott, someone was sharing earlier, has made their rec centers free for all children. Now typically. Um, Seattle right now has a program called Swim Seattle where they are very do, doing what we're doing on a larger scale. Cause they have more resources and more facilities and more. So there's, there's, there's models for this. I'd be curious to do research to see how this might align with like um, the rights of a child and the USF child friendly studies effort. Is it, is it a right of a child to? To have the life safety skill of, of swimming and, and what the nexus is there? I, I guess I'm here, Brian, or maybe I'm curious if you guys. We can do some research. What I hear you saying is that what is some net nexus?
I mean, I gotta be honest, it's for me, I'm, I'm from somewhere else and we, we had pools in all of our schools and I learned how to swim in gym class. So, yeah, in school, um, and we didn't have rec centers. So for me, it's like completely, like. The idea that we're the only ones meeting that need is, is a bit foreign to me and um. And I, you know, I think as a community, we, we have a, a lot of people that could help solve this problem together.
Which one should just be a parks department issue? Like, it's not the burden of the, this department to. And I don't, I don't see that. That, yeah, that too. I like the UNICEF hat, you know, like this is a. Yeah, it's a right, it's much behind that we believe in a city that everyone should have. Should feel safe and be safe and more. It's not just like the Parks Department to provide those.
Yeah.
Six classes in three months, like, you know, this is a, a value of our city, you know? We can part it with a district. Yeah, but yeah, yeah, you know.
Bernie? Do you have any thoughts?
Bernie, do you have any opinion you want to add?
Sorry, I was uh, having a hard time on the meeting. Um. Uh, in general or specific to the rec center admission fees? Anything? Um, I, I, for me, the, the most pressing issue based in this community is just the general unaffordability of this community. Um, and I think that certainly impacts um. Everything we do at Parks and Rec and uh, it was a huge part of the presentation tonight, uh, which I appreciate. And I, I hope that that is a uh, a prominent part of the city council's discussion at their offsite. I'm sure it will be.
Just general un, unaffordability, you mean?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Obviously, it's like hugely impacts what the Parks and Recreation Department does, but it impacts every aspect of life in Boulder and um. In, in my personal opinion, the cost of living here makes the city worse. Because it keeps people out who would add to our community and make it great.
Okay. Turn it back over to you for. Anything else you, you have planned?
Yeah, we just, just, I guess, just as a closing activity, are we, anything else for?
Can I just capture what I heard as next steps to make sure we're all aligned, if that's helpful? So what I heard is to put a matter from the board on the February agenda where you would discuss your topics. Um, Chuck's recommended approach was you have that discussion at February, perhaps one person. In the past, one person, person has volunteered to author a draft that then you. You would approve at your March meeting and get submitted to council.
You review before the March meeting and then you approve it at the.
It would be part of your packet, yes. Okay. I think we had the agenda setting for February, but we'll just get that added and all good. That's easy. I'm so glad that timing came out that you all had this extra shot at talking about it.
Yeah.
Um, I guess just as a closing activity and kind of uh, for us, if you would like, go to the next slide. Um, Sunny and I were talking about this, uh, I did this at a recent event and I thought it was a really cool way to kind of end an activity. Uh, in a forward thinking way and just kind of the continue this conversation we've had here. And so, uh, sorry. Slide. Uh, so if everyone could participate, uh, crowd members and staff, if you guys don't mind. Um, so just take a minute to write a potential headline that we might see in the, on the cover of the camera. Um, related to parks and rec centers and it can be any topic, could be a topic we talk about tonight or something else, uh, but something. Your, your personal vision or what you'd love to see, you know, come true in, in a year's time. So, um, and then we can go ahead and share those at the end.
So not just the centers, but any parks and recreation facility or activity?
Yeah, anything related to parks and rec. In daily camera style of writing.
In, including typos?
All written by the same.
Tear on your TV remote card, let's cut them to slack.
That's a long headline. I have a hard.
You can't write the whole article just saying.
I changed my mind halfway, that's why.
Who's the sports writer for the camera that? So awful, um, he covers the.
Right now.
Yeah, he could cover the high school sports. Oh, yeah. Brett, 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 you, is that right?
I don't wanna. I need to, to wrap up. Classic, which was a. She said, you know, I'll give you extra credit. It's how you're done. You know, they read the camera, you know, they geeked something. She had to cut, she had to cut me off.
That's pre hedge fund days too.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, with the local paper?
Yes. They had lots of staff.
I think I have a total of seven riders now.
Yeah. They had seventy and eighty. At least, seven now.
All right, I have mine.
All right, if anyone wants to start, we can just go around.
Um, mine is, mine is pithy and short. Um, I, I hope and expect this will happen. City council announces funding for new tennis and pickleball courts, subhead recent community study found significant need.
Excellent.
We just go clockwise?
Sure, Chuck, you wanna go?
Okay, um, Coach Prime headlines golf fundraiser for Play Builder Equity Program. Golf course, eleven million raised.
Eleven million raised, I love that.
Chuck, that's fun.
Kind of love the January golf tournament.
City strikes oil. Pledge is that all royalties will flow to Parks and Rec. It's possible, guys.
I don't think there's.
You can't frack. But you know, you never know. Didn't, you know, someone just shot a gun, right? Beverly Hillbillies, they just totally.
I skipped you, I'm sorry.
That's based on a true story, right?
That, that's how you strike off.
Uh, mine's kind of silly. Um, the fitness core at North Boulder Park has become a popular destination for American ninja warriors and training.
That's already true.
Seska.
Um, mine is, uh, city council approves funding for funding to build and modernize rec centers, subheading, expect warmer pool temperature, says Director Rhodes.
Nice.
That's a great.
Um, mine is South Boulder Rec Center breaks ground on the new Sobo Cafe. Which will serve cheap, healthy food on a wraparound porch, perfect for watching pickleball or gazing at Bailey Lake.
Nice.
Boulder works out its pandemic slump.
Good.
Uh, mine's a little bound by reality and timelines, but ties to several of yours. But in January of next year, the headline is access for all and future facilities funding strategy approved. Get ready for November.
It's a little aspirational. Uh, Boulder discovers how to heat pools in a climate friendly way. First ever net zero rec facility. Planned at E B C T. I like it.
Um, I was along the same lines as, as Bernie. Uh, BPR launches into twenty twenty-five with forty-four new courts for pickleball and tennis. No more fighting between the two groups.
Cause there's a fence between.
I think the camera will be nothing but clickbait by January twenty twenty-five, so my headline is. BPR serves entire community with this one easy trick.
Well, we do have two more teammates online.
I'm not sure if they're participating. Yeah, I think they're listening and we don't want to put them on the spot.
We don't?
Well, I mean, we could, but I did not require them to have appropriate attire on. They are listening and so I feel like it would be really unfair, cause maybe they're listening and semi-working. Or, you know, like, I do most city council meetings, I'm like walking the dog and listening.
We're exercising.
Rocky and I do long walks on Thursday nights, but I don't have to be at council, but I have to know what's going on.
Someone needs to take up the mantle from Mary Scott and needs to be on their exercise bike during the meetings.
I just like start pushing my chair around the room second.
It's like a library. Right? She had that like, she had that like warm library back. It's like on her bike is, I remember the first meeting I was, the first couple of meetings, I'm like, what?
Why is she moving?
Really well done. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good job, you guys. Our next board, board meeting is uh, February twenty-sixth, six P M. Uh, Bernie, you have anything to add?
Uh, no, thanks, everybody. I apologize that I couldn't be with you in person.
I hope you heal well and quickly, Bernie. I'm so sorry that I happened to you today.
Yeah.
I will be unfortunately driving to the next several months of meetings.
Thanks for sending me that, and the, and the food.